Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, November 2nd. Tracy? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here. Let the record show that we have a quorum in the Commissioner's room. All right, let's all please stand for the invocation. Most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We just continue to ask your blessings upon our service men and women overseas and at home. We ask special blessings upon our first responders' father and our hospital workers this time of COVID, Father, and they're under a lot of stress, and we just ask that you would help relieve that for them. I also ask, Father, be with us through this meeting. In Fortuna's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Okay. I just want to premise this whole meeting, the fact that we're trying to get through it as early but as quickly as possible because our clerk has got a big night tonight, and she's got a huge day tomorrow, and probably for the next few days after that. So we'll keep in mind that we need to be expedient. All right. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one addition. We got a late addition from Greater Grasset. They'd asked us to set a public hearing, and I will put that at K2. There is any objection? K2. Anything else? Hang on.
I'm going to put Greater Grasset at K2.
Support.
All right. That's also including the whole agenda. You're accepting the agenda?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Okay.
Roll call.
Oh, yes. All right.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Okay, move on. All right. Any brief comments? Do we have anybody on the line, Matt?
I'm not seeing anyone connected in for a public comment.
All right, thank you. Consideration of Consent Calendar, Board Minutes Communication, Recommendation from Committees.
I move we accept the consent calendar.
Or discussion. Ask clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes, thank you. Interstraters report. Tracy?
Hello, everybody. Let's start with human resources. We have four open positions posted on the county website at present. I've been working directly to raise awareness about the Director of Veterans Services and the Human Resources Officer positions. The Director of Veterans Services provides assistance to veterans and their dependents in accessing benefits provided by the county, state, and federal agencies, primarily the United States Department of Veterans Affairs. The Director also oversees the work of two other Veterans Services Officers, manages grants, and administers the department budget. It's a very difficult position to fill. It's a niche position, so I'm taking every opportunity to talk about this and to get the word out, including to those who might be listening in on our meeting this evening. The other position is the Human Resources Officer position. The duties there fall into five broad areas. Recruitment, payroll, and benefits administration. Third, training and professional development. Four, labor relations assistance. And five, maintaining employee files and continuing our work to convert those to electronic form. So I urge folks to check out the county website under the Human Resources Department for additional information about these positions. Would love to get some really good applications and applicants to look at for these.
Tracy, do you know, have we put those up on like the MML and MAX website? I know.
Yes. They're all over. They're all over.
Great.
Yeah, I don't have the list in front of me, but they are on those. The Veteran Services Officer position is posted at posts within a 75-mile radius, you know, on and on. We don't just put these up in the paper and hope for the best. So, no, they are on those. So, and also, I'm contacting HR departments and other large institutions, larger employers in this county and surrounding counties. So we send it everywhere we can think of. And if you think of anything else, please let me know. So in the finance world, staff are headlong into the audit preparation process. Our accountants generally come in for a day or so in November this month each year, and then for a longer period in January. It's a little bit hard to believe it's that time already, but so it is. Chris also indicated that he has closed out the grant given to us by the state as the substitute for revenue sharing, meaning he's assigned expenses to the full balance, which also means it's been spent. The BLAKE project continues to move. The next step is to have this board and the four townships prove an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the townships. I've sent a draft of this to Tony Castanza for review, just waiting to hear back. Just really wanted to get that piece into place here. Now, you know, we're hearing about COVID everywhere, but I really want to give, you know, this company's experience with it. The number of COVID cases here continues to climb, and in fact, in the last couple of weeks, it's just spiked. As of last Thursday, October 29th, Grasset had 491 reported cases, and that's 17 deaths. Clinton County by last Thursday had pushed over 1,000 cases. They were at 1,066. So that was October 29th. Grasset had 491. Just one week earlier, at October 22nd, we had 368 cases. So that was a mighty increase in just a week. Now, it's not staying outside the courthouse doors. In our courthouse community, we have two individuals who are confirmed as ill with COVID-19 and 17 that I know of as being out because they have confirmed that they were in close contact with a person who has tested positive. Those are our staff. There are a handful of attorneys who are also not to be in the building for a period of two weeks. So, and then we have a handful of others who are out for COVID-related reasons, such as a parent who is staying home with a child who has had close contact. So 491 cases as of last Thursday, 17 deaths, and a whole bunch of us that are out for having had close contact with folks. So COVID is here. It's gotten through the doors of our courthouse, and we just need to continue to do what we know to do here in the building.
Tracy?
I'm sorry?
Just to update one more time, Haley just posted 572 now for Grasset County.
572. So that's not even a week since last Thursday, and we've gone up 70, 80 cases. So it's going up exponentially now, and so gotta just do what we know to do. So on that note, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Ask approval of Tracy's report.
So moved. Support.
Discussion. Ask clerk to call the roll. I got you.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Commissioners Committee reports. Chuck?
Just real quickly, they did let me out of school long enough to go to the Mid-Michigan District Health Department meeting. I was very pleased that the department is deciding to advise the schools of what's going on and leaving the decision up to the school. I think that's a very good decision. And been very busy at headquarters. Things look real good. I am concerned that the media has not prepared the country for what's going to take place tomorrow. So I believe there's a huge victory coming for the President. And if anybody's interested, there's a victory party at headquarters tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Went to the City of Alma Commission meeting, or zoomed in, I should say. They're zooming still their meetings. They've got, you know, some blight issues. I think everybody has blight issues these days. And, you know, most of theirs is, you know, if you drive into town, you know, the business loop, you know, there are a couple businesses that have some issues that have kind of been ongoing issues, and they have kind of some of the same issues that some of the townships have in that, you know, really for them to do anything other than write nasty letters and so on, it takes, you know, legal steps, and then that costs money, and you got to decide if you want to go down that road. And I mentioned to them, I've mentioned that, you know, we are, you know, we are embarking on a process that they might at least want to communicate with us about. This might give them some ideas. The other big news from the city is, well, two things, I guess, you know, they also got the boost from the state, and so their budget is looking a lot better than it was back in the spring when they were looking at some pretty significant shortfalls. And Alma's fires group is still clicking along, you know, a lot of, you know, kind of small but important ideas for improving the city. Parks and Rec is discussing the grant, you know, the idea, and we've discussed it a lot at our level, at our board level, about, you know, the ability of municipalities to access some of those tax dollars for their own projects, and that was part of the millage, which, you know, passed overwhelmingly, and so now the devil's in the details about, you know, coming up with some guidelines. And, you know, we've got a lot of time because, you know, really our thought is that millage doesn't actually start generating funds till the calendar year. The millages start on the calendar year, so it'll be a year, you know, before, a year from the beginning of the year, before there's a significant pot of money in there to be able to distribute. But we're developing guidelines. Then once we get those out, we'll be bringing them to this group for approval, and then taking them back to the board and then putting them out there for the municipalities. So that'll be exciting, and I think that'll create some good stuff in our communities.
Thank you. Sam?
None of my townships in that, but we had a Greater Grasset meeting the other day on Zoom, and it was just basically setting up some structure for this year and things like that, got that finished up. I got a question, Tim, and really for Tracy too, and I've mentioned it to her. When you look at like the City of Alma, and I had talked to Tracy about the Village of Perrington with this BLAKE thing, where do they fall in under a township? I mean, you know, have we given that much thought, or has the committee given that much thought for like a Village of Ashley or a Village of Perrington, or those that are incorporated and kind of operate themselves?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Sam. Are you asking if?
Like, could a complaint be made out of the City of Alma through the township for a blight ordinance? Or at a Village of Perrington or the Village of Ashley, you know, could a complaint be made?
Through the county process, I think is what you're getting at, Sam, right?
You know, I mean, they're a separate entity, but were they invited into this? Are they included in this? Because their township's going to be included, like Fulton Township's included. And so I mentioned this to you before about the Village of Perrington that contacted me, and where are these places? It's like, I don't know if Alma's township's involved in it or not, but.
Alma has its own blight ordinance and does its own work. You know, at the beginning of this thing, we communicated with everybody we could think of, and it whittled down and whittled down. Some ended up not being interested because it wasn't a good year for them financially. Others, in spite of, you know, three letters and two phone calls and an announcement at every township association meeting, indicated they hadn't heard about it, and I, you know, I'm being a little bit flippant there, but I just want to communicate that there was a lot of communication, and.
My question to that is, did it go to the villages or did it just go to the townships? I mean, when you look at like the Village of Ashley, or you look at the Village of Perrington, I mean, those are separate entities. Did it go to them?
Yes. I don't have, I don't have a list in front of me, but I've been asked that before, and the question is, yes. Where we are now, where we are now, Sam, is we want to do with the four that have been willing to step up and put down money, we're going to do the first-year pilot program with the four townships, and then after that, we want to open it up, you know, fine-tune anything that needs to be fine-tuned, and then the hope is to open it up more broadly. I suspect at that point, we're going to have quite a bit more interest because more people will have heard about it, you know, just the interest is generating. So there will be another opportunity. It's just not going to be right away. I would, yeah, I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. All set, Sam?
Yep.
Okay. Jan, got a report?
Yes. I went to a meeting in Breckenridge last Monday night, and that's the only meeting I've had. And also, I wanted to let you know, Commissioner Bailey, that we have meetings. I have actually a Michigan Works meeting this week, and then we're going to have MMR, I believe it's next Thursday, I'm hoping, not this Thursday.
I'll get ahold of you, Jan.
Yeah, I'm thinking what I'll do is, I got to finish up the minutes. I'll get ahold of, I'll put that down on my list to get ahold of Brent. It's been so busy that I'm just way behind on stuff, but I'll call Brent this evening and find out.
Okay, sounds good.
That's it.
All right, thanks. I too attended the Health Department meeting. A lot of information there. I sense the Health Department is just as frustrated as everybody else is trying to get things. Contact tracing is just a nightmare. We approved four more part-time people to be put on that contact tracing. We just hired a couple nurses. I mean, it's going to get a lot worse before it gets better, I think, as far as the COVID issue goes, but they're working on it, and they're working hard on it. Had a brownfield meeting. We'll touch base on that just a little bit tonight. It's property over in Alma that Mr. Smith is not, your Mr. Smith, the other Mr. Smith is working on, Ryan. And then it's to do with some development over there, so. And that's all I have today. Okay, all right. We have the airport resolution before us. And it either probably would be best we had Tim talk about that, if he wants to.
Sure, and, you know, and Sharp-Eyed George pointed out that there is kind of, there's a typo in there towards the bottom, which is kind of contradictory of the whole thing, and I don't know how it escaped my eyes or Tracy's eyes, but essentially what the resolution is, is from the airport authority, you know, is their willingness to kind of pass off control of the airport to us. And the idea is that, you know, the management of the authority would really fall under the county administrator, but then also be advised by an advisory board. And I think towards the bottom there, it says, you know, the manager will report to the authority, and I really think that's supposed to say administrator because it kind of lays that out at the top. I think the way that the people on the ad hoc committee envision this is much like the way our other county boards operate. You know, so for example, you know, these Parks and Rec, you know, Parks and Rec has an advisory board or recreation, you know, Parks and Rec Board. But when it comes to the day-to-day, you know, the Director of the Parks reports to Tracy. And, you know, and I think that's one of the things that we've all agreed, and looking at the airport that's been missing over the years, is that, you know, when you've got an authority that meets, you know, at best monthly, but sometimes every other month or whatever, that's really not a body that can supervise any type of manager and really provide them direction or give them the kind of feedback that they need. In terms of what this actually is, in terms, as far as like actions and so on, you know, right now, the Airport Authority is still, you know, in charge of the airport. Their desire is, as we've heard, you know, is to have us take it over. What we wanted to make sure we had was some type of a template, you know, or statement or kind of principles going forward that the Airport Authority would support, and this is what they support, as well as what the ad hoc committee supports. And so the idea is that if this is something that we like the idea of, you know, then we can start doing some of the legwork to figure out how exactly that happens, you know, if we're all on the same page. Because it doesn't make any sense for us to spend the time, and us is really Tracy and staff, you know, to spend the time and energy, and in some cases, money, because some of these things will require a legal opinion if we're not in agreement on, you know, generally how we want this thing to look. In terms of the specifics of how we want it to look, I think at this point, you know, we're not really sure. One of the things that, you know, we heard from our consultant was this notion that, that, you know, all things considered, you know, for what we're paying, we're getting pretty good bang from the buck from the existing manager. You know, now, that being said, the consultant also identified, you know, a number of areas where we could, you know, potentially improve operations and also, you know, generate some revenue. And so, you know, in terms of what that management looks like going forward, you know, in theory, you know, the management could be, you know, the existing management, but with more direct supervision, and maybe things don't change a whole lot, or maybe they're given additional responsibilities, or maybe we change, you know, how we sell fuel or things like that. Or it could be, you know, we look in a different direction, but I think that's something that, you know, we have time to determine. But really, at this point, it's just deciding, you know, does this seem like this is the direction we as the board want to go? We've kind of expressed different versions of support for this, but now here it is, you know, in writing, and is this what we're thinking? And if so, you know, then we can kind of give staff the go-ahead to start putting this together and making it happen.
The question I have, Tim, is what exactly, what kind of motion are we making tonight? I mean, there's a lot of unknown here. I mean, whether, I wonder, I don't know if we can do this as a county because back when I first came on the board, one of the things that I had asked about was, we had all this property out, you know, out there by US 27, and I think it's Superior, and I said, well, how come we don't, you know, put up a restaurant and a gas station? And, you know, we'd have money coming in, because at that time, back 20 years ago, we were really financially in a bind. And they said, no, it's illegal. We cannot own anything or run anything. So that's what I'm wondering about this, exactly how, what are you, I guess, there's a lot of unknowns here.
Oh, you know, we can definitely run the airport, you know, I mean, that's how most airports are run. You know, the authority is, you know, is kind of the outlier. And of course, some of you remember that, you know, really the whole reason for the authority was because, you know, the county really said, we can't run it anymore, you know, we didn't have the finances to do it, and so we kind of passed the hat, and that was, you know, how the authority got formed, you know, and that's why it's, you know, Pine River Township, Arcata Township, you know, Ithaca, you know, it's kind of the, you know, the City of Alma, Breckenridge, you know, everybody kicks in their little bit of a share. But, no, we can definitely, you know, assume control of the airport because we had control of the airport before. Now, again, kind of the devil is in the details in terms of how to transition to that, you know, that's why, because there's a lot of work involved. If we don't want to go that route, you know, then there's no point in having staff do a bunch of the work to figure out how that's going to happen, you know, because it, you know, really means a transfer of fiduciary responsibility, as well as, you know, kind of day-to-day operation responsibility. And then there's some other issues, like, you know, right now, we have, you know, if you look at the plat map, or if you go onto GIS, the county owns most of the airport property. However, the City of Alma does still own some airport property. So if we were to take over the operation of the airport, for example, we would need to, you know, come up with some kind of a lease agreement with the City of Alma, you know, for them to lease us, you know, their piece of that. There's also a legal question, because when the Airport Authority was formed, in that, in kind of the founding documents of the Airport Authority, it was stated that the Airport Authority would take control of the county parcel and the city parcel, and then that would be in the hands of the Airport Authority, which kind of makes sense. But as far as I can tell, that's never happened. And so one of the legal questions we'd have to figure out is, all right, well, do we just say, okay, well, it never happened, so we'd have to worry about it, or does the Airport Authority have to undo that, and have to pass a resolution saying, okay, we're not going to do that? So there's just, there's just a lot of those kind of tissue issues that need to be resolved, but there's no point in, again, spending all the time to try and resolve them, and this isn't the direction we want to go.
Well, one thing we've done, we've already gotten two years in this, but the other question I had for you is, so you're saying that the county would go fund it 100%?
The idea, so, you know, when we talk about the funding, so right now, the public share of the funding is about $64,000, and the county pays about $26,000 of that. So if the county did nothing differently, for example, if all we did was just say, right now, we're going to run it, we're going to do the books, we're not going to change anything in the management agreement, yes, that was, that would be kind of one of the changes, would be that instead of kicking in $26,000, we'd be kicking in $64,000. Now, of course, you know, what we decided to put in, I guess it would be up to us. You know, the airport does have a fairly healthy fund balance, and there are, as the consultant's report pointed out, there are some other ways to generate revenue. On the other hand, you know, if you're talking about different type of management, you know, you may be talking about more expenses too, if you're going to expand services. So, you know, I think that's a piece of it. Now, another piece of that is, you know, one of the discussions that was had in these meetings with the ad hoc committee, and again, you know, the members of the ad hoc committee were people with, you know, significant experience at the airport and significant business experience, and, you know, and one of the things that we discussed was that, you know, there really needs to be a role for some of the users in terms of funding some of the improvements that they like to see at the airport, you know, so when it came to things like capital improvements. And so, you know, one of the things that we'd want to explore would be ways for that to happen. There's a number of ways that can happen, and we're receptive to that idea. You know, John Lepine said, you know, just flat out, you know, he didn't think that was going to be an issue. I mean, if there are things that, you know, that needed to be done, you know, that he didn't think it would be hard to get people to step up for that, you know, he's had a lot of experience in that regard, so.
Yeah. You said that Alma, why would Alma want to get out of it? I mean, they own part of the land. Why would we pay them lease? Why don't they just stay in and kick in some?
Well, you know, I think part of what started this whole thing, if you remember, Jan, was, well, there's, I think there were two issues that really kind of, you know, were the catalyst for this. One was that, in general, there was this perception amongst Airport Authority members that it didn't really make sense for just the Airport Authority members. just the airport authority members to be funding the airport when the benefit of the airport is so widespread. You know, so a a good example of, you know, is is essentially it seems like every time a major project takes place, major, economic project takes place in Gracia County, the airport gets used more, right? So with the the soybean processing facility, you know, they were in their contractors for some of the bigger users of the airport. Um, when, you know, when something like that happens, it it, you know, the benefit might not necessarily be those who pay. And quite frankly, everybody who's paying, you know, which is a lot of the people I represent, the people you represent are essentially paying double, you know, because because their municipality's paying, and yet the county's also paying. So that was part of, I think, what drove this idea that, hey, you know, this is a county-wide airport. The county should just fund this thing, you know, why why are, you know, citizens in St. Louis, and Alma, you know, and Ithaca, and the township, and certain townships, you know, you know, basically paying double, um, while everybody else is just paying the county's share. And I thought that was, that was legit. And then the other thing that really called the question was, two of the townships saying, we're just not going to do this anymore, you know, so we're out. But Alma has, Alma has no interest in running the airport, um, you know, they've been doing it essentially because, the county hasn't done it, you know, and that's historically, you know, Alma's kind of been, you know, the entity that steps up, but, they, you know, I mean, I I and I'm think we need Alma to to run the airport anymore. I I think the county is capable. You know, financially, we have, you know, more resources and more access to resources than just the city of Alma does, you know. So, so I think that's the other thing. But no, they're happy to to hand off the airport, um, because it's not, an Alma airport, you know, it's not even in Alma, you know, it's in Arcade Township.
Yeah. Well, that'd be my feeling too. I don't, Alma and the other entity shouldn't be double paying and.
Right, Chuck, you're the other one who brought that up. I mean, it's it's it just, it it's not fair, you know, it's just not.
So, you know, I I like the looks of this report. I'd like to see us move forward with it and, uh, the details are going to have to be worked out.
So we're just, so what we're looking at is just to, be okay to start working out details.
Right, basically, we're kind of accepting this in principle, knowing that at some point, if 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 we accept that in principle, then as we figure out the details, you know, then there'll be, you know, official things that we have to approve. But the idea is, again, you know, this is, you know, we've, you know, we kind of punched it back to the airport authority, you know, they created this ad hoc group, which I think was a really good idea. Um, and I think the ad hoc group, you know, came up with a good plan that, you know, the airport authority feels is the way to move forward and.
Uh, yeah, um, just to keep moving things along here, Chuck has put a motion on the table that we, move forward with the.
I'll second, I'll second it.
Okay, moved and supported. Now, so any other questions? I want to make sure anybody has any questions.
How do we get out if we don't like how it works? If we accept that we're going to move forward today, we don't know any of the details. You know, none of the details, how how do we, how do we get out and say we, this doesn't look like it can fund itself? This doesn't look like, it's a viable option.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think that's what the motion was.
Yeah, well.
I thought the motion was to let her go ahead and and, uh, have, uh, our administrator start checking into, what it's going to take to put us where we need to go or in a different direction on it.
The motion is to adopt this resolution that we're going to move forward with this, so that's not what Chuck said.
I don't think I said that. I think we want to move forward with this, you know, I I like what I'm seeing, you know.
Right, yeah, right now, because, right, really, the a resolution can't change the the ownership or the fiduciary responsibilities, you know, really all we're we're saying with this is, you know, and and again, I wouldn't even say, I wouldn't even say we're approving it, I'm just saying we we accept it because it's as much for, quite frankly, Tracy's benefit because she's going to do the lion's share of the work. You know, if this seems like the direction we as a board have wanted to go, which I think it has been, based on our past discussions, this really then tells her that, okay, let's start looking into this. But the airport authority, will continue to be and has to legally be, you know, the responsible entity until, ownership is is formally transferred over. And that's that's going to take a lot more than just a resolution by the.
Well, i- i- it, what I understand the motion to be is to allow our administrative staff to more move forward with the exploration of what would entail for us to do that. If and then that report, and if they look at the financials and say, we can't do this, then we have to take their recommendation. But at no way do I believe tonight we're accepting the airport.
Thank you, George, for clarifying that. It's my intent.
Yeah, that's right. We we just want to find out where where we stand here. Where does the airport stand? Uh, we have not done a a a deep dive, if you want to say, on the financials. We don't know where all this stuff's at. We don't know where all the bodies are buried, in other words. Right, so, so.
So can I just clarify the proposal? So is it to proceed with the proposed plan as presented? In that, in Tracy's memo for the airport plan?
Yeah, to move forward for exploration, not, we're not accepting the airport. We're moving forward with the exploration of a possibility of, uh, of the county taking over the airport, period.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
I'll second it.
Sam, you got any more concerns? Okay. All right, can you read the motion back?
Yep, just a second. You're going to have to help me because the first motion was by Murphy and seconded by Bunting to proceed with the proposed plan as presented for the airport plan. Then we added an amendment to explore the financial.
Well, we're going to explore all aspects of the airport, which includes financials, management, and anything else that would go under that, all right? We have not accepted the fact that we would take over the airport. We want our, our staff to look at it now and come back with their recommendations on how we should proceed.
Mister Chair, I I think, um, it it might be helpful if we can distill that a little bit. So, uh, do I understand this board to be, uh, directing the administrator, I know Angie's writing, to direct the administrator to further investigate the steps necessary and the feasibility of trans.
Hold on. Necessary and a feasibility?
Yes. Of transferring airport ownership to the county.
That'll be operations also.
Well, with ownership comes all the rest.
All right.
That's what Chuck said.
Sorry?
I said, I thought that's what Chuck said.
Uh, you know, she did. Angie did that, did that help? And then I'll turn it back over to you, George, if that does indeed reflect the motion.
Yeah. I think that's what we're all trying to say here is, and and Sam said it correctly. We we need to dive into this. We're not, no, no way, shape or form tonight. And I don't want anybody listening out there eh, in the public or the airport authority to uh, to think that we just card block took the airport over tonight. That did not happen.
Right, well, and you know, and and I think it it goes both ways, quite frankly, because, you know, the the airport authority still has control, you know, from a fiduciary and management contract standpoint of of the airport. And then, again, as this exploration continues, and if if we come up with, hey, here's the plan, they've got to approve it as well, you know, they've just kind of approved this this kind of draft of, hey, let's let's explore the thing, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're all on the same page here. Okay, I think that's been explored. If we don't have any other questions, so, and and the clerk call roll.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes, very good. Now we move on. Thank you very much. I know it's, we just, I wanted to get everything perfect and Sam helped out with that. I appreciate it. Okay. Uh, we've got, uh, the next thing on our agenda is K2, which is the, uh, is, uh, what, period. Uh, um, Casey on the line?
You're setting a pub, yeah, Casey's on the line. You're you're setting a public hearing.
Yeah, we're setting a public hearing for, uh, Brownfield Rural Development Plan for 313 North State Street in Alma. And Casey, you on the line? You want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Okay, yeah, um, this is just simply an administrative task to set the public hearing for your next meeting, which is November 17th. Um, in which case we will bring you the, uh, Brownfield Plan for approval or for your approval. Um, we also have the city of Alma meeting, which will be November 10th, so the city of Alma will approve it and then you will approve it and then it will move on to the state. Um, so this just is administrative, um, to to get the meeting on the books, basically.
Okay, so all I needed is a motion to, uh, set a public hearing.
So Casey, what property is that before we do that?
Yeah, that is, or Ryan Smith of Gemini Capital Management, um, is built, building a boutique hotel on State Street in Alma. And just do a lot of extra excess costs, um, when developing it, um, due to the age of the building and asbestos removal and such. Um, so it wanted to pursue a brown field on that site. And that is, it's just north of the commercial bank building.
It's the old paint store.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay. I'm looking at motion. Yeah, do you need a motion on that?
I do, Jan, thank you.
For the public hearing, I made the motion of the public hearing on the 17th of November.
Yeah.
Support.
Okay, we moved and supported. Is there any questions?
Do you need to set a time for that on the record?
I did put 4:30, so that we'll just.
That's fine. That will move on into it. Yep. Okay, call roll, please.
Um, Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. All righty.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Appreciate it. All right, okay. Any other unfinished business? No. Uh, any public comment? Can't anybody on the line?
I am not seeing anyone. There's a couple of county employees that have joined, but I'm not seeing anybody in the public.
All right. Very good. Is there anything else coming for the body?
Good luck, Angie.
Thank you.
Tracy, Tracy, will you call me? This is Jan.
Everybody stay safe.
Yeah, she'll call you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.